Is officially called to order at 8:43 a.m. Approval of the agenda, please. All right, Jeremy, second, Anthony, all in favor?
Yes.
Disclosure of pecuniary interest, anybody?
No.
Nothing, we're good. Approval of the minutes of the July 23rd meeting? Who could move that, please?
I'll move it.
Brian, seconder, please. Jeremy, all in favor?
Yes.
Good, we're good there. All right, current business. The first thing on there is letter of offer. And so the idea is that I should call Debbie Hill on the phone, offer her the job, and then get this letter to her. Somehow, we'll have to meet and I'll have to hand her the letter and see if she'll sign it, and I'll talk to her on the phone. And at this point, too, at some point, I have to call everybody else and say, "We're not offering you the job." I had called everybody and said there was a delay. Can I, if, but I guess I have to wait until Debbie says yes, correct?
That would be correct.
That would be correct. And we haven't in this, we're not asking her to be the booking agent or anything, we're just asking her to be the custodian. So that should be good. And do we have to have a vote, though? I think we do have to have a vote to say we're offering the job to Debbie, correct?
We have to have a vote, sorry.
Do we have to have a vote to say that we're all gonna, I'm gonna offer the job to Debbie Hill?
That was in the minutes of the last meeting?
That's on the minutes of the last meeting, okay, thank you. I'm not looking at them at the moment. So we are, we are good with this then, and I will go ahead and I will...
One, excuse me, just, there's one addition I think we have all discussed and have all agreed that needed to be added, and I think we all kind of just overlooked it. It would be the, one of the terms and conditions of our hiring was that the, that she had insurance coverage of personal liability of $2 million. And what, what we forgot to put in there is you will be compensated for reasonable additional premium costs.
Yes. Is everyone in favor?
I second that motion. I second that motion that Jeremy just made.
All right. Do we have to put a limit on that reasonable, or is that just up to our...
I think, you see, like, reasonable means in the hundreds of dollars, not thousands of dollars.
Okay. So that's seconded, how many in favor of that change?
Yes.
We're good, passed, thank you. Now, the other scenario, of course, is that as of the end of August, we will know, hi Patty, welcome. Can you hear us?
Yeah, I know you did that just so you couldn't talk about me while I was...
So now we're up to the booking agent meeting. And so, oh wait, before we go on, sorry. I hope you all got that note that I received from Steve Sage, because I had sent him the note, you know, asking him for some clarification on things like WSIB and the liability insurance. And yes, the $2 million, great. And the WSIB, he said it's really quite simple, but he also said that the person who we're hiring should reach out to the township so that they can help with the application, because you have to do it correctly, or you're gonna have a problem. You know, like, they could start trying to charge you. So just, I will, so did everybody read that?
Yes.
Yes.
So we're all okay with that? Oh, good morning.
Can I ask something? I just got here, okay?
Yes, I know.
Linda, I apologize, but I didn't get the invitation for the meeting. I didn't get it. And I've missed, obviously, a lot of it. So you're charging along, assuming I've heard all of what preceded, what you've just said, and I'm going to be asked to vote on it. If you wouldn't mind quickly summarizing, recapping, what was discussed before I joined the meeting. I apologize for the delay, however...
Well, the only thing we discussed, Patty, was the position of the custodian, the letter that I passed on to everybody that Jeremy prepared that I'm going to offer to Debbie Hill. And there was only one thing, little addition to it in the terms and conditions, which we've also voted on and okay, that the person will be reimbursed for, you know, for any reasonable extra cost, because they have to get the personal liability insurance. And we have voted and approved the letter, and I am going to call and offer the position to Debbie Hill as the custodian.
And that was before I arrived?
Yeah, so that's done. All right, and that's all that's happened, Patty.
So you don't really need me for quorum today, then?
At this, no, we didn't need you for quorum, because we have Barry on the phone and we have Anthony. So once we had a quorum, we got started. And then I was just talking about the letter that Steve Sage sent me, and I hope you read it.
Yes.
And talking about that, and as I said, the important thing is that the person has to go, you know, get some help from the township, agree the WSIB so that it can be done properly, rather than, you know, rather, because she could end up, the person doing it, if you do it by yourself, could end up having to pay for that, too. But if you get the help of the township, if you use, as Steve says, sometimes if the applicants use the wrong words on the application, the WSIB may require that premiums be paid. And we have to, we have to make sure that that works out. Now, the interesting thing is, though, obviously, if the contractor has any employees under any situation, such as children, husband, cousin, et cetera, they should be paying WSIB premiums. So we're gonna have to, but that's employees. So I'm assuming that if Debbie's husband helps her every once in a while and is not an employee, but a volunteer just helping his wife, is that called an employee?
No.
Okay, then we're good.
I would, I would say, no, let's not go down that road.
I won't go down that road.
Linda?
Yes, right.
It also mentions subs, if she is ill or unable to do it. If they have a sub that comes in to do it, then, again, premium. So I don't know what that is for us.
I know, so that means that hopefully, subs are never required. I don't know what would happen. You know, again, these, everything has changed so much.
Yeah, so one of the things, though, Linda, is that her husband might be the second.
Yes, I know, that's what I just said, yes.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I just mentioned that, and I said that, but again, Barry said, "Let's not go down that road," because, so I don't know what to say, what we're supposed to do, because if, if it turned out that he helped, I don't know where we go or what we do, because then there could be WSIB premiums. Right now, we're hiring one person.
Yes, you want to make sure that the insurance covers that one person, and that one person is doing the work.
That's right, and I guess that's what we have to do. But it sounds like we are the only hall, we are the absolute only hall who is dealing with this. Nobody else is getting their people to do personal liability insurance, WSIB, nothing.
So just to interject with that, there are other halls that actually hire firms to come in, and they are covered, because they own and occupy a business. And then there are other halls where the board members are doing the work on a volunteer basis.
I also know that there is one hall that I talked to where they have hired a person to do that job, and it was, the hiring was done about a year ago, and they've heard nothing about this. And so they asked me to fill, to fill them in on what's going on. But yes, it's very similar to situation to what we have.
If that's the Sunnydale Hall, I'm sure Terry's coming to the next meeting and discussing that.
It's not Sunnydale, but anyway, that's where we're at. And it's somebody who contacted, I contacted them just because I knew them, and I said, "Is this what's going on with you?" And she's never heard anything about this. So, I don't know. But that's where we stand on that one. Now, the next topic on the agenda is booking agent meeting. Basically, we are losing our booking agent as of the end of August. That will be Sarah at the Creemore Echo. Right away, we're not really in a situation where we're gonna have to, you know, be doing much booking. But at some time, we will need an agent. Now, I know the township is supposedly working on a program to be the booking agent for all the halls. I guess my question is, how quickly will this come about so that we do not have to deal with this? Can anybody answer me?
Last I spoke with Terry, oh, there's Anthony again. Last I spoke, last I spoke with Terry, as soon as Jessica comes back into the office, they're hoping that that's something that they can provide the, the hall boards. So we're hoping sooner rather than later, but I don't have a timeline, I'm sorry, Linda. I can talk to Terry and get back to you if you'd like.
No, I don't think he has a timeline either, does he?
No, it just depended on when Jessica comes back and when they've worked out those bugs.
And other things about, just out of, you know, what we've been talking about, like, our hall could technically reopen, but up to us.
Excuse me, are you jumping to the next topic?
Well, right now, yeah, unless there's anything else on booking agent.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, so...
Anything else on booking agent?
I'm sorry?
Anything else to do with a booking agent at this point?
Yeah, so we, we met with Sarah and had a good review of what, what she does as, as part of the role of being a booking agent.
Yes.
And it's important that we, we know these, because we've got to, these have got to be sent to the township, so that, you know, when they're looking for a system or have a system, that, you know, we can cover off the particular situations that I'll, I'll discuss with you. But, so anyway, the meeting with Sarah was very good. She went through all of the functions and tasks that she performs in doing the booking. So, you know, there's nothing that, that was extraordinary, but the, there's a couple of things that came out of it, and those are needs of, needs of, of the position, really. And it's things like need to show the facility, so it's like a client will call up, and then they want to see it, right? So who's gonna do that? And then need for the key, or lock, if it's electronic lock, who's gonna, who's gonna set those, and who's gonna distribute the key and collect the key, right? And then another is to manage payments with the clients, so give them the invoice, give them, accept the payment, and somehow get it to Brian. And then, here's a really good one that she says is really growing, and that's dealing with client needs, which are increasing. And you can certainly understand that for things like weddings, where people are, geez, okay, I see the cost is pretty reasonable, but it doesn't include setup or cleanup or anything, right? So we'd like to pay you for that, and therefore, can you look after it? You know? So those are four little incidental things that came out of how, how to do that. And we need, again, to pass that on to the township. And just, you know, those, those are how, or how, together we will, you know, the township can have a system, they can have a person, but then there's all these other ancillary types of activities that need to happen. So I'll just leave that with you, and we can, I can send those to Kayla, if you like, what the findings were, and...
And then it should be passed on to the entire board, and I appreciate the three of you, because I know Jeremy, Brian, and Patty went to that meeting, and to find out as much information as possible. And again, all of these extra, well, I don't mean problems, but extra requests of possible renters is one of the reasons why Sarah is resigning from that particular job.
Yeah, she's interfering with her day-to-day and is...
It is, it's interfering with her day-to-day as the paper. And think about it, like, we've always had this situation where it was easy to deal with the keys, because the Echo is right in town. And, you know, just things like that. Patty?
Okay, so at this point, I'm just going to interject what, you know, Jeremy, Brian, and I were there at the meeting, and Jeremy kindly took the minutes to make sure that all of that was mentioned. I think that one thing that was really important that Jeremy mentioned was the fact that there was a bit of a disconnect between the booking and the invoicing, and the manner in which she's taking, keeping the accounts. And she just has, she admitted that she was, you know, it was very casual, and it wasn't a very robust system. So after the meeting, we discussed, you know, and she actually mentioned the fact that the Village Green or the Clearview Charitable Foundation, as they're known, were going to be hiring a booking agent, and that was part of their mandate. I was, everyone's been at the meeting, so we know that they were, and they have offered to hire someone who's going to be an event coordinator for the Village on the Green. And she mentioned, well, you know, it, it seems part and parcel that maybe perhaps that person could take over the responsibility of booking station on the green. And that sounded like a very logical thing. I've also been, you know, as long as I've been on the board, I don't know, Kayla, whoever might have the records of this, Linda and I have been sitting on the board together for probably six years, and we've been hearing about this booking system that's supposed to be coming from Clearview, but nothing's happened from it. So we don't really know exactly whether or not, well, as Kayla said, there is a person now that's responsible for it, but it's still clunky, or maybe it's not even functioning. We haven't got an update on that. So it seems to me that what Sarah suggested, and what Brian and Jeremy and I later discussed, seemed like a good idea. So I, who should I get a phone call from? Not an hour later, was Stuart Lazir. And he called me regarding my champagne initiative, and we wanted, he wanted me to help him with a bit of marketing for, or dialogue for that. And I said to him, "Off the record, Stuart, it's funny that you called me. We just had a meeting with Sarah, and I wanted to know, you know, if, if you don't mind, I'm gonna ask you, how long, far along are you in hiring this person, this event coordinator?" And he shared, "Well, we, you know, we're not gonna be hiring anybody till November, because we're waiting for building permits, and the delays for our Village on the Green project is quite, it's being delayed." And I said, "Okay, great, well, you know, here's what I just had a meeting about. We're taking over the booking from Sarah." And he said, "Yes, I'm familiar with Sarah's booking, eight software she's using." And I said, "Well, Station on the Green is now looking for somebody to take over her position, and I was just wondering whether or not it might be something that could umbrella Village Green and Station on the Green, if, if, you know, you're gonna be hiring somebody." And he said, "Well, you know, it makes sense to me, and we would definitely be using, or, yeah, we would be upgrading the software program, because it doesn't have invoicing capability, and there's a lot of programs out there that are very simple to use that are integrated with all of that." And I said, "Okay, well, I'm just, you know, feeling it out, and if it's possible, how would we proceed?" So he said, "Well, you would write a proposal to our board, so your board must agree to send this forward to our board. I can't speak for it, you have to send it to our board, and we'll consider it, and then maybe we've got this thing off our hands." So I say, well, that, those are my words, maybe we've got this off our hands. So we've been waiting forever to get a new system in place. We have this new initiative that's coming down the pipe that has events on their agenda in a town square, and they are going to be paying for somebody to take the responsibility on, as mandated by the township. How fortunate for us. So I'm just saying that maybe we should discuss this as a board, at the booking agent position. If we could reach out to the Clearview Charitable Foundation and ask them if they'd be willing to take on the position, a booking station on the green, it would be off our hands. Now, the other thing that was mentioned at our previous meeting, if you, I was not involved in interviewing, I think her name's Debbie, the lady that you mentioned. And it was mentioned at our first meeting when we decided to move forward and offer the job, was that she had in her past taken on responsibility for booking events. And then the fact that she's living in Creemore, and then the fact that she's responsible for cleaning up after events, I believe that it's been in our discussions, wouldn't it be clever of us if we actually asked her to take over this job? Because then she'd know when the events were there, then she'd know when to clean it. And Sarah is willing to train her on the existing system. Sarah said she was very willing to assist us and with whomever we hired, take on the position. So forgive me, I'm not trying to get out of a job that I offered to volunteer for, which I did, and I offered to do it as a bridge for what we found going forward to be a more permanent thing. So that's where we're coming back to. So you want to offer Debbie a job, why don't we ask her, call her, ask her if she'd be willing to take on the booking agent position? And that would be solution number one. Then we add 200 bucks to what we're paying her, if she's willing to do it. Solution number two is we send a proposal to Clearview Charitable Foundation and ask them if they're willing to take on the booking positions or booking events for Station on the Green when they hire somebody, and, and wait and see what they say. Their next meeting is August the 6th. So it's, all, could all be done in a quite quick, could be done quite quickly, and the only glitch is Sarah wants to be wrapped up the end of August, and they won't be hiring anybody till November. If we have to propose this to Debbie, then she's acquired that position, and we paid her extra money for it. If we hold off and just hire Debbie as custodial and wait and see how the charitable foundation thing sorts itself out, if they say no, then we go to Plan B, which is, "Hey Debbie, we need a booking agent, you want to take it on? Here's another 200 bucks." Those are all of my thoughts about this, and now everybody can pick on it.
Comments? Comments, anybody, thoughts?
That sounds like, that sounds like a reasonable plan, I think, if we start with offering it to Debbie. I think it's important that, as the station, excuse me, we keep control of the booking, because I think 90% of the booking is going to be for the station. I'm trying to envision, in terms of the park, when it's up and running, what exactly would they be renting out? It's public park, it would only, in my mind, be someone wanting to use this area for some kind of function. We're not really clear on how that's going to operate, and whether they would be booking and collecting money for rental for any part of the park. And if they did collect money, where does that money go? Does it go to the foundation, or does it go to the township? So that's kind of something we're not clear on yet, but I think I agree with Patty that if we offer it to Debbie, we get a booking system running. We're going to have to upgrade our software, I believe, and then approach the foundation in terms of, because we are going to have to approach the foundation in terms of coordinating all the activities going on between the station and the park. And that would seem to me the time to do that. And then we can use that to work out, you know, if it involves booking as well, then we can build that into that discussion, and that would be great, I think.
Any other comments or questions?
Only that I think the sequence would be important, and that is to deal with her first on the, on the job at hand, get her to sign that up, and then, then, once that's in place, then, like, let's not muddy the waters with the other job, but... So then, that, as a separate and distinct topic, let's meet with her and talk about, here's the role, which we need to better define, and here's how it'll work, and here's, here's the compensation, is that something you could take on? So I'm just saying that...
So you're saying that when I talk to her, just stick with, "I'm offering you the custodial position" and say nothing about the booking agent position at this time? Is that what you're suggesting, Jeremy?
That would be my recommendation, yeah, for the, for the, get this one settled up, this offer, the position, boom, we're done. And then, then deal with her, it can be within days, weeks, or reasonably quickly.
Anthony?
I suggest we offer both positions. If we're gonna wait for the town or the Village Green to help with booking, we're gonna be waiting and waiting, and we're gonna get caught without anybody booking our events. Offer her both jobs, if she only wants one, that's fine, but I think we should offer both, right away.
Well, then we would need a whole different letter for that. And well, it's just, that's the way it is. We've got a letter right now offering her a custodial position. We would have to change the letter to offer her both the custodial and the booking. Comments? Barry, you're hiding, anything you want to say?
Barry's not here.
Oh, he really left, left?
Yeah, but what happened was, we were using the same phone line or something like that, so...
Okay.
Or same link.
All right, can we, can we do it with two letters? One for the custodial position, and a second for the booking agent? Because in a sense, they are two different positions.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Mayor, man. Thank you very much, Linda, nice to see you all. I agree, actually, with what Brian suggested, is that we should have a second letter, because, you know, this, this may only be a one-year agreement to do this, too, given that software is being deployed across the township, and you already raised some questions about that. I have some questions about it, too. I, I thought this was getting done, and apparently it isn't. So I'm gonna look into it a little bit more on your behalf, as well as the other halls, too, that this, this software hasn't been, been working. So I'm gonna check into that on you. But I would recommend, if you do a second letter, because you don't want to muddy the issue, it's important to get the, the maintenance, cleaning position secured, in my opinion.
All right, and then the other problem is, too, honestly, if, when the township does get this booking system done, the other thing we then have to look at is the fact that there's no convenient place to get keys and return keys, as of right now. So there would be a few other things that we'd have to deal with. But, all right, so doing it as two letters. So we would need, any other comments before I ask for somebody to make a motion?
I'm gonna say that I agree with mayor measures in, in terms of the two letters, but I also would like to suggest that why don't you phone her, ask her if it might be possible she'd be interested? And these letters that Jeremy is, the first one that Jeremy's kindly crafted, and the second one for booking agent, which we'll have to craft, they're obviously gonna have a dear blank, because somebody may not take these jobs, and we won't have to rewrite them, they'll, they'll stay the same. So I think that's the benefit of having the booking agent job separate from the custodial job, just in case some, you know, she decides she doesn't want to do it, and then we have to look for somebody else.
All right, does anybody wish to make a motion, please, so that we can deal with this, and I will? Like, when I, in other words, what you're suggesting, like, when I call Debbie and say that we are going to offer her, we'd like to offer her the custodial job...
and say that we are going to offer her, we'd like to offer her the custodial job, I want to know for sure whether I'm supposed to mention booking agent at all. You know what I mean? I want to know exactly what I'm allowed to say to Debbie, please. So I need a motion and a second or so. Who would like to make a motion, please?
Do you want a motion? Do you want a motion saying that we uh we offer the booking agent job to Debbie Hill as well? Is that what you're asking?
I know, I'm asking you to first make a motion to offer Debbie Hill the custodial job. Because that's, you need a motion for that too.
We've already done that.
Already did that at your last meeting.
Last meeting.
All right, then what about the, what about the, uh, do you want me to, all right, I I don't know how to say this. Am I supposed to say anything on the phone to her when I talk to her about the booking agent job or do we just leave this on the sideline right now?
Well, first, first of all, we need to pass a motion that we're offering her the position of booking agent. And if we do that, then the next question is, do we offer her both at the same time? Or do we space it out? So I think we start with our, do we, are we gonna offer Debbie Hill the booking agent position? We need a motion for that.
I'd like to make a motion to offer her the job.
All right. Seconded by Anthony. All in favor? One, two, I'm assuming three. Jeremy, is your hand up?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's passed. So I'm going to, when I talk to her on the phone, I'm gonna be looking at talking. I've I've only got the letter for the custodial. Can um, Jeremy, are you really good at this and could you do another letter? That in, that uh would be for the booking agent job and send that over?
Yeah, I can do that. It's uh, I just want to do a little bit of a a clarification here on that process. Uh, what I would recommend is that you hand her uh the letter, meet with her, get her, get her to sign it and then just as I said earlier, then now that that's all clear and done, talk to her about what this other opportunity is, the opportunity of booking agent, right?
Okay, so you really want me to keep it real separate?
I, I, that's my recommendation and then it 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 stops muddying the waters. Like she knows that she had interviewed for a particular job. And what I'd like to do is see that that she, like she fulfills that um by signing up. And then once that's done, then like you sit with her, like I'm suggesting you meet with her personally.
Yeah.
And then sign up and then say, okay, another opportunity has arisen and uh go through, you know, with her, the booking agency. And then you could even at that point pull out the second letter at that point if you wish.
All right, it's, it, does that go along with the motion that we just passed, everybody? Like I don't mind doing it that way, so that's fine.
No, that works really well for process as well because Jeremy's going to have to come back and get the board's approval for that second letter. This meeting is supposed to be to approve the uh, the initial letter. So I I have a motion that we have adjusted said letter to include that uh reimbursement fee.
Good.
So we will need to still pass that letter as presented.
Which letter now?
Jeremy's prepared with the additional statement that has just been approved.
Okay, so we still have to do that?
Yep, I will need a copy of that letter and at some point in this meeting, we will need to approve that letter so it can be sent. At your next meeting, I would suggest uh having the second letter available so then you can then go back after a couple of weeks or whatever and ask her if she'd like that position as well. Is that-
So in other words, I um, we have to have another meeting awfully soon is what you're telling me.
Yes.
We have, all right, because we have to approve the second letter. Yes, Anthony?
Is there any harm in just mentioning it to her and let's see if she-
Oh, no, no, that's, that was-
Will we do a letter?
I can mention it to her. I don't have to sit on my hands and my mouth and everything. All right.
Why don't you phone her?
Yeah.
I will be. I'm gonna start with the phone, Patty, believe me, and then I have to deal with all this.
Go ahead and talk to her.
So just for clarification-
I'm gonna pull my hair out before long.
There's a motion, you have a motion on the floor to offer uh the booking agent position through a second letter to the successful applicant of Debbie Hill. And it was moved by Patty, seconded by Anthony, is-
We did vote on it.
Did you call that all in favor? Did I skip that?
Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor. All right. I, these Zoom meetings are gonna drive me nuts, by the way. Um, is there anything else?
Tell me about it, Karen. Linda, tell me about it.
I'm sorry. It's just, you know, it drives me nuts.
May I make a pro- proposal? That we dropped another letter um and as, send it to the board of Clearview Charitable Foundation asking them if they would be, if they would consider um in the position of event coordinator, if they would be uh willing to discuss amalgamation with uh Station on the Green booking.
I would um-
Position, we don't have to pay. We have an opportunity and I understand Brian expressed his, you know, let's say eighty, twenty percent, uh eighty percent mostly Villa, Station on the Green, twenty percent going to be the the park.
Well, we don't know that. We don't know that.
No, we don't. We don't know any of it.
We don't, yeah.
Absolutely.
I I would, Patty.
Give them an opportunity. If they're having a meeting on August the sixth, send them a letter, a feeler, fire it over their bow, let them discuss it among themselves and come back to us and say, uh, yeah, be, we'd be willing to discuss that or no, we're not interested. Simple. But their meeting is on August the sixth and they're going to be interviewing to hire for the end of November. And that way we get something in there because they're gonna be drafting letters of proposal and offering somebody a job too. And we want to make sure that if they have agreed that it may potentially include Station on the Green that is in their proposal, otherwise they're gonna have to rewrite the whole thing.
Is that a motion, Patty?
Yes, please.
Patty, can we expand that, can we expand that um letter or offer to that board, to the community foundation to encompass more of, it's we're aware they're going to be hiring a project manager. Maybe now is the time for the two boards to talk about how we're going to operate together and how the program manager fits in with what we're doing and included in that discussion would be booking agent and scheduling and all kinds of other issues. It would be a good time to open that discussion. Um, as Jeremy says, we don't know yet how things are going. I said twenty percent. That was just for the sake of a number. I have no idea how they're going to operate the park. Um, but I think it's, we need to start finding out that information and working with them so that we can coordinate what we're doing. And so booking agent would only be one topic of a range of topics that we should be talking to them about.
Hey guys, we've just said that we're going to offer this booking agent job, Debbie. Now we're suggesting that we're also going to offer this booking agent position or part of-
Yeah.
Actually, I've asked the Village Green programmer to be our booking agent. I don't think we can do both at the same time. I'm not saying that we can't eventually, like if for some reason Debbie either doesn't want to do it or, you know, is not interested in it, then that would certainly be our fallback. But we may not get that done uh before their August sixth meeting. You know, it's just too, it's too close a timeline. So I think what we're gonna have to, I think we keep that as a possibility, definitely. But we've already said we're gonna offer it to Debbie. If she turns down, can we go somewhere else?
I'd like to interject there. Okay, so the first thing with the, first of all, I see where Brian's going and it's a larger scope.
Yes.
Idea. Um, for specifically where we're at right now, at this point in time, Sarah Hershoff has been paid two hundred dollars a month to do what she's been doing on, on an archaic tool. Okay? Now, we're not going to be re, we're not going to invest in new software. It's not pro- proper or on our agenda. We don't have the time. So what we're doing is we're asking Debbie to take over the position as it exists um and being trained by Sarah on her software. When by sending a letter out to uh Clearview Charitable Foundation uh suggesting or asking if they would be willing to consider this as an umbrella, their 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 hired position would also include an umbrella booking uh Station on the Green, they're going to be looking at a brand new software system that includes invoicing and online booking and they're going to have something very new, shiny, new, modern.
Absolutely.
Will have had Debbie carrying the ball for the additional two hundred dollars likely for a year before the charitable foundation per- person comes into effect and they've got everything set up. They'll have shown her metal. If by any chance the job does go over to the new Village Green person, she's still make, we're not gonna take that money away from her because Lord knows, it's gonna become very busy. She's a single person and and if she sticks it out for a year, we won't take the money away from her. We'll just take the job away from her and she'll be grateful for it.
Kayla?
Sorry, just to condense everything, so you are going to offer it to Debbie first. Do you want to pass a motion to approach the Village Green Community Foundation to discuss the possibility of merging an event coordinator with booking agent responsibilities? That gives you an opportunity to have an open discussion, but you're still giving Debbie Hill that first right of refusal.
Kayla, yes.
So does somebody want to pass that motion?
So Patty made that motion, so who's gonna second it? Uh, Doug Measures? Are you, all right, all in favor?
And what's the problem, guys?
Personally, I think we're just looking too far down the road. Let's worry about getting a booking agent. Let's worry about Station on the Green. If we're, if we're so concerned with the Village Green to take over booking and the township to take over booking, we're just, we're just setting ourselves backward. Let's move forward. Let's get our our house in order. We need a custodian. We need a booking agent. Let's deal with that. Get it done and then we're, as we see, the village is already months behind. The township in their booking is years behind. Let's just get done, take care of our own house right now, I think.
You know, I guess the problem might be if Debbie says no to the booking, then-
Well, then we have enough, we have to take care of our own problems.
And then we, then we go into the Village Green and say, how about, like, so in other words, even, even though-
Still a year away.
This motion just gives you the possibility to discuss, to, sorry, to discuss that possibility. It doesn't actually move the the business forward. It just gives you that go ahead, to go ahead and speak with them and see what they're thinking, should Debbie not want that position.
Yeah, but the thing, this won't happen before August sixth, Kayla. That's the thing. Like, we've got this timeline. Yes, Doug?
Thank you very much. And you know, Anthony's right uh in the fact that the uh you do need to deal with the immediate concerns that you have. You need a a maintenance uh janitorial staff. Uh, and uh you're now aware that you're going to need a booking agent. So uh, I think Patty's recommendation uh is a good idea. That's why I wanted to second it. Because I think the point is, is that you need to look to the future of what this whole facility is gonna look like and how you're going to work with their, the the uh, the foundation is hiring a staff person. So um you could effectively have three staff persons working all in that property when it could be a workload for two, perhaps, maybe even only one, but uh-
Are you saying that we can, we can pass the one to offer to Debbie the the position of booking agent and simultaneously put in a request to meet with the um Village Green on August sixth? And discuss and, or send a letter to the Village Green for August sixth suggesting that we would like to coordinate with them on many issues, including being the booking agent for both the station and the park area.
Okay, so if I can continue, Linda, I think that the point is, is that you need to uh, you need to secure your janitor. So let's not scare Debbie away. Fair enough. Uh, so I think you need to have a conversation whether on the phone and and suggest to her that uh, you know, as an organization, we're having a uh, another crisis. And uh, we're reaching out to you to see if you'd be interested in doing this. I mean, and and I think that's what you need to to lay out for her. Because she may say, I really don't want to do that. She may, doesn't, she maybe doesn't have the um you know, the confidence of the skills to deal with the public as far as booking. I don't know. Maybe that's why she wants to do this other job. So you might want to check first whether she's even interested. Um, but I think if you lay it on, if you put it on the table for her so she understands that as a volunteer group, you're trying to to meet the requirements of the uh, of the organization's needs and uh we're reaching out to ask her to do it. But if that fails, Linda, if that fails, please remember volunteers, if this it does fall back to you to to help solve this or even step in and be a bit of a booking agent yourself as many of the uh, the halls do that same thing themselves. So it's a difficult task and that's why uh I know that this board years ago voted to to get Sarah to do that role and it's good for her doing it.
Right, so what you're suggesting then is that I just, when I called Debbie on the phone before we, you know, I say, we're offering you the custodial position if you're still willing to take it. And she may say no, by the way. You never know. It's been so long. And um then if she says yes to that, I say, great. I said, is there any possibility that you might also be interested in an additional position as booking agent? If she says yes, we proceed that way. If she says no, then we try to see if we can put something forward before August sixth to the Village Green organization.
Yeah, I I I think from Patty's research that the Village Green are not prepared to be hiring their um-
Until November.
For some time yet.
I know, but the thing is that this meeting that they're having happens to be on August sixth. Patty seems to feel that that's kind of a date that we have to kind of meet, send something to them by.
I I think that uh, I think, I think you need to attend that meeting and be part of that or or at least be uh, be present because obviously there's going to be a very symbiotic relationship between your two organizations. So uh, I think you need to be part of it anyway.
Well, they haven't invited us to be part of it right now. We haven't invited-
Go ahead, Patty.
Okay, so uh Brian, uh what Brian shared in his thoughts regarding this um was a very broad scope. And I know that Brian, you've been working uh as our representative with uh the Clearview Charitable Foundation. Uh, am I, am I right?
I have attended some meetings, yes.
And so have I, Patty. We've both attended.
Great. So what I'm simply trying to say is, let's make a ver- draft a very simple letter. I'm gonna ask Brian to to perhaps take on the responsibility, or I will draft a very simple letter that we would like to send to the board members of Station on the Green and to review. And then if we, um, it's going to be a very passive letter and it's going to simply state that um going forward or some, a a very brief version of what Brian just shared, we obviously will going forward be um connected in a symbiotic relationship between the Station on the Green and the Village Green. And we would like to propose or ask if they would consider taking on the responsibility for uh booking Station on the Green, adding it to the job description of their hired position and uh throw it to them and see what they say and what their response is. It's not like taking Debbie out of the picture at all, but it is firing one over their bow to see if we can create a relationship. Now, Brian, you may have a better idea of the words chosen and that's why I'm I'm firing it back to you because you've been working with them as Linda has and let's just keep it really, really simple because we haven't really engaged very well up till now. We've been sort of back off and not wanting to commit to anything. And this is sort of an olive branch opportunity for us to say we would like to work with you- And this is sort of an olive branch opportunity for us to say, we would like to work with you, and maybe this is something that you could possibly consider, and using it specifically related to the booking agent position.
Okay, Brian?
Okay, I could, I could support a motion of sending a letter to them at their next, for their next meeting. And by the way, Patty, we, we have stated over a year ago that we, we support what they're doing in the park. Our, our problem right now is that we, we, we don't really have a clear picture of what is happening, and we haven't really been brought into that picture. And that's, I think, starting point where we need to get. I could support a motion saying that we would like to meet with them and with a view to looking at how the park and the station can operate together, what that would look like. And there's a number of areas that we would need to discuss. We've already mentioned some at a previous meeting when Stuart Lazier came to our board. There were a number of things, and we didn't get final answers there because there were still, you know, a lot of unknowns even for Stuart. So I think we need to start that discussion with a view that if the park is opening next spring or summer, whenever, it's going to be up and running, and we'd like to be up and running with it. So I think we need to start having that discussions with their board. I would leave the booking agent out of the letter at this point. I would bring that up in those discussions because once we get a clear picture of what the program manager is doing. This position would be a manager position. What exactly does that entail? Will they have an office in town? Like, how is it going to operate? All the little nuts and bolts things that we're not aware of right now. And they may not be clear on everything either, but I think we need to start having that discussion. And booking agent is only one of a number of things. I wouldn't bring that up right now. I would bring that up in the discussion. It may be that Debbie Hill has offered the position, and she takes it as booking agent and turns out to be a stellar booking agent. They may want to keep her doing that, and they might take over the cost of her, the 200 a month. Who knows? Or we decide on a different model. And I think all of that, we, we work out together with the CCF. It was a political party. I could support a motion saying, let's work together and discuss all those things.
Thank you. We'll need a motion then.
All right, so, point of order. There is a motion on the floor. Brian, would you want that to be a friendly amendment to the current motion? So instead of, the original motion said, motion to approach Village Green Community Foundation to discuss the possibility of booking agent merging event coordinator, or, sorry, possibility of merging event coordinator with booking agent responsibilities. Did you want a friendly amendment to that that said, a motion to approach the Village Green Community Foundation to discuss the possibility of merging responsibilities between the Village Green and the Station on the Green?
Yes, I would.
Now, is that an acceptable friendly motion for the first and second or who were Patty and Mayor Measures?
Yes.
Yay!
Is there a second or for Brian's motion?
So that's...
I'll second Brian's.
Okay. So if you want to call that...
So discussion?
Oh, sorry.
Did I do that incorrectly, Kayla?
No, it's, so the Patty and Mayor Measures, they agreed to that friendly motion, so they're the ones that first and seconded that motion. So you would then call...
Okay, sorry. Sorry, they're firsting and seconding it?
Yeah, but I'm not sure if Jeremy had some discussion that he wanted to put...
Yeah. So could you, could you say that part about the booking agent? Because what I would like to do as a group amongst ourselves, Station on the Green, I would like to say that, like, we have an operating function called a booking agent. And, and it may well be that that could be the nucleus of a future position for everybody, okay? So like, I, I don't want it to, the letter to indicate that we would like to go somehow and use their necessarily. They don't have a system selected either, so, and they don't have necessarily people, right? So let's, I'd like to just, in our own minds, keep it open that our person is, may very well be the, the solution to the mutual booking agent requirements.
Does that change the motion, though? Do you want to actually change the motion?
Well, that's why I just wanted to explain it, to say, have, have we, does that give some leeway and wiggle room what you've said there?
Sorry, Jeremy, the, we've removed booking agent, the title, from the new motion. So this new motion just gives the opportunity for the two boards to meet and discuss the possibility of moving forward in the future together in some sort of fashion, whatever both boards.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to be sure. We're not sort of ramming ourselves down the avenue of us going to the Village Green as, as being our booking agent, so.
Nope, the motion just offers a place to speak.
Yeah, okay.
So we need, do we need the motion read again, or are we good just to vote? Kayla?
Oh, that's, that's up to you guys. If you, do you want me to read the motion, and then you can call it?
Sure.
All right. A motion to approach the Village Green Community Foundation to discuss the possibility of merging responsibilities between Station on the Green and Village Green Boards. Moved by Patty, seconded by Mayor Measures.
All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, we're good. All right. So when I talked to Debbie, I mentioned, I mentioned the custodial one, get that taken care of, and then I can then say something about booking agent as well, right? Kayla?
Yes, that's fine. I'm sorry, I just have one more point of order before we get too far down the rabbit hole. Going back to the letter of offer, we will need a motion to approve the letter of offer as amended with that, that little blip that we said about the personal liability insurance fee.
Okay, who's in, all right, motion by Jeremy, seconder. Brian, all in favor? Yes, passed.
Thank you, we're back on track.
Well, now wait a minute, where was my head? My head was somewhere, and then it got disconnected, which is not unusual.
Booking agent, and you're going to speak with Debbie.
I'm gonna, I am going to call, oh, I know where I'm at now. Who is going to prepare this letter to send off to Stuart and the board to suggest that we would like to do this? Who is willing to deal with that letter? Brian, are you?
Maybe Patty would like to write it.
I'll write it.
I mean, Stuart's phoning you, Patty. Why don't you, you have that relationship. Why don't you?
Write it?
I'll say, I'll, I'll write a letter, and I'll send it out to the board, other board members. And you can edit it as we did Jeremy's. Is that acceptable?
That's fine. My other question is this, do we really have to have another meeting before that letter gets to be sent off to, to Stuart?
No, because you just passed a motion to approve approaching the Village Green, and that's the method that you're choosing to approach.
Patty, you're up. You're ready to do that? I thank you very much.
No problem. And then we'll just send it by email to Tony Errol and, and Stuart. And then they can bring it up to their board, and then we'll see what happens.
Yes, Jeremy?
Yeah, so I, I had a problem. Just as soon as everybody voted, I realized we should have changed some word in, in that last motion. But it was to say, like, I don't think we should conclude on merging. The word merge kind of troubles me. Merging activities. And what we should be doing is seeking synergies and where, where there may be opportunities of synergistic value.
I agree, Jeremy, and I like those choice of words. I'm going to borrow them, okay?
Good word, good word, good word.
But this letter is just about having a discussion, so there's nothing written in stone, really. It's just about having a discussion, so I don't think we should concern ourselves with, you know, the tiniest details.
Just avoid that word merge because of, so.
You can edit when I send it to you.
Synergies and coordinations, keep it bland.
Yes.
Can we move on now?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is reopening. All right, just a couple of things. Remember, we were talking just in general about, you know, I mean, for one thing, I don't think we're ready to reopen as it was. And for one thing, who's going to book weddings and all of that stuff anyway? And certainly our public washrooms are not going to be open as public washrooms because we do not have the ability to clean those washrooms to the extent that they would have to be cleaned. So that's off the table as far as I am concerned. We did think about, you know, just really a couple of things. The church. We have the Clearview Community Church normally meeting at our hall every Sunday. They use that. Well, of course, they haven't been doing that for a while. Now, from what I understand, and I hope I'm right about our, about our, what our capacity is, but from what I understand, a church can only be 30% of the capacity of the building.
The room that they're using, which in your case is the building, yes.
And our, our capacity, I did call Bill McDougall and ask him, because, but I can see Jeremy is looking through the book. Bill McDougall seems to feel that our total capacity is 120 people, which would mean the church could have 36 people added in, along with all of the other rules, like wearing masks, you know, I mean, there would be a lot of rules. And washrooms, I would suggest that if we even offered it to them, and I have, I have no idea if they're interested yet. I have not talked to them. Basically, even say, forget about the washrooms at all that are there. The only washroom that could be used is the one that's through the kitchen at the back. It's a single washroom. So only one person at a time would be able to be in there. And, and the other thing is no use of the kitchen at all, no use of anything there. And normally the church, when they come, they not only have church, but they have a small section set aside for children, you know, just, and some, like, almost like a little mini daycare kind of thing going on, which, again, I, I'm assuming a child is a person, so that would be part of the 36. And anyway, should we even consider? Oh, and the other group we were thinking about was Tai Chi. They are not the least bit interested until at least 2021. They are not interested in coming back. And the only other group that we have that's regular is Early On. So are we interested? Do we feel we would be able to offer the building to the church and to Early On? Or one or the other? Comments, please?
I'd like to ask. I'm not familiar with Early On. Could you explain to me who those people are?
Well, it's actually a government program, from my understanding. And it's basically for, you know, children. And sometimes you go in there, and there's only one child and one parent. Sometimes there's a couple of parents and a couple of children. And they're just, you know, it's kind of like a daycare kind of a scenario, basically. And it is done, as I said, it's a government program, and they have been using it for a while. And that's, you know, again, my understanding of it. If I'm incorrect, someone please correct me.
Okay, so if I understand this correctly, it's like a parent-child drop-in center for them to have socially...
No, no.
You're saying, what are you saying?
I've actually been there when it was going on, doing some maintenance. And it's more of a parent-child get to go and meet other parents and childhoods of younger kids. And the parents do not leave them there. They don't drop them off. They stay there with them. So if we can open up the complete station, it offers a lot more space, a lot more room, a lot more social distancing. And as regarding opening the station, I think with Early On and the church, it can be considered like a soft opening, maybe in October. Like I said, when things are getting cooler, we can, and we're looking at a lot of time between the two groups coming in. So there's a lot of time to clean the, the station between that, and not offering it to the public for booking yet.
Okay, well, just to clarify, so I understand that scope, and there would be a limited number of people that would be permitted to do the, participate in the Early On. It would be up to the administrators to administer that, and they'd have to sign an agreement to keep with the numbers and the COVID protocol. But at the same time, I totally agree that it's a, it's a really important initiative for the town. And I think that we, I don't know anything about when an IF school is opening in September, but I think we should look at after Labor Day weekend to open both the church and the Early On.
Well, I think we have, remember, the township is also going to be sending us a big toolkit sort of thing. And remember, Amanda sent, sent something on about all of the rules of opening. And there are a lot. And the other thing is that if we offer it to, let's say, the church and Early On, the responsibility of following the rules is theirs, not ours. We are not the police. And I want to make that really clear because I'm not the least bit interested in being the police of this. So...
I think, I think at this point, we, we need, before we can open it to any group, we have to have a custodian in place, so.
That's right.
I think at this point, any discussion with the church or E3 would be, we, the board is prepared to look at reopening the station to the church and/or to E3 if they are interested. And if so, there's a number of measures that we have to put in place first. But we need to know whether you want to, you're interested in getting back into the station anytime soon. And if so, then we have to put certain measures in place. And once those are in place, then we can open it up to you. I think at this point, it's just an indication of intent.
Um, are you, what I want to know is, should I? Would it be a good idea for me to at least contact the pastor, who is Clayton Cullum, and ask him the question? That would be my first step. And I don't, do we need a motion for me to be able to do that? And, you know, for me to be able to approach Clayton and ask him if they are interested?
I don't think you need a motion for that. That's just some good background information before you move forward with reopening or the discussion of the hall board reopening.
And truthfully, I think we'd have to bring Amanda Murray in about all of the rules because, I mean, this whole concept of, like, in other words, for 36 people to be there, every divider would have to be open. It's the 100% use of the station, if that's it. And I mean, there are a lot of things, like, they'd have to keep track of who's in there, you know, sort of a, sort of a tracking method. Like, there are so many things that would have to be done. Jeremy, do you have a comment? Did you, was I right on the numbers? Did we, did we get that?
Yes, that's correct.
It is 120.
120, yes.
So our maximum is 120, so that leaves them with 36 people. That includes every, you know, it would include any kids, any parent, you know, any adults, the minister. People have to wear masks, and they have to be willing to deal with all of those rules. Anthony?
Well, the church could maybe do two sessions even. They would have a whole day. So I don't know if that is...
That's what they're doing at their other church in St. or what I understand they're doing is that people actually have to book that they're coming.
Okay, so they have, they have a protocol of their own that they can bring to the station, and they understand all the implications.
All right, I will contact Clayton and see what I can find out. I will leave Early On out of the mix right now until I find out where the church stands, if that's acceptable.
And also with Early On, it doesn't really affect going back to school because all these children are, we're talking under the age of three, three and under that participate in Early On.
So is it all right if I start with the church and then go over Early On at a later time and see? And that's, and again, I said, I say our, our, our public washrooms are non-existent at this point in time?
Just the one in the station.
And the one in the station at the back, if the church comes in.
So, that's good to go and do the preliminary research to make sure that there's an appetite for use of the facility.
Yeah.
Like Amanda and Terry stated before, as things become, you know, more available, you know, different measures and social distancing groups increase and stuff like that, you're welcome to, you know, have a meeting and call for that reopening. And I can absolutely invite Amanda to go through the toolkit, if that's something that interests the board, to better understand that. But at this point, I do...
I don't even know what, I'm not even sure if we're interested in reopening. We'll find out once we know all of the, the hoops, the ladders we have to go through. I know some, I know at least one board has said they are not reopening. They have no interest in reopening.
Yeah. Yeah. Then, again, so what they did is they passed a motion to remain closed at this time. They will revisit that motion every time they have a board meeting, to see what their comfort level is with reopening at that time. I mean, like everybody's saying, in all the communication coming from the township, the mayor, the CAO, everything's changing, you know, minute by minute, sometimes.
Minute by minute.
So, does it interest you at all to pass a motion to remain closed at this time until your next meeting?
Well, that's just one month, then, right? Month by month, we're...
Yep.
All right. Anthony is moving it, secondor?
No.
Patty, all in favor?
No, question, okay, question on that. I think we should make it simultaneous with the opening of the municipal buildings. I think that we should be positioned, so, when is the municipal buildings going to open?
Right now, we're targeting somewhere in the neighborhood of August 24th. It may be prior to that, there, the, the room has been, the whole building has been renovated, I guess, to, to add all these little booths and cubicles, your old staff, so, I think we're ready to open up so that the, the public can come in and do interactions with the staff. But that doesn't mean that our public washrooms are going to be available. It also doesn't mean the chambers is going to be available.
Right.
You know, so, it's, it's kind of a loose target. Initially, just a week ago, we had set it was going to be August the 10th. Now it's looking like August 24th, so, we'll see.
The only, sorry, yes, good. Okay, so, the only reason I say that is, I think that's a good indicator that if, if you're open, you know, there'll be a sense that other buildings will open, and it'd be nice if, if the Station on the Green could be coincidental with that, that, that we open at a same or similar time as, as the rest of the municipal, or your municipal.
Yeah.
I think we're playing it by year, by time, right? Because honestly, the thing is, the municipal buildings have staff.
Yeah.
We will only have one custodian, and we have to get that person hired. The cleaning, the cleaning of any building, once it is used, is going to be phenomenal. If we can't do that, we can't open. Yet one person probably can't do it.
To be fair, if I just want to finish on something about cleaning, I mean, that's the big problem, isn't it? I mean, even opening any building is becoming a cleaning problem. And even just today, we have our administration center, we have half of our staff in there working today. And we've initiated a, a use of the, the staff washrooms, which, you know, it's a busier building, so it's, you know, it's got multiple facilities inside the washroom. We've set it up so that there's only one staff person can use a washroom at a time. There's a little light that goes on when, when it's occupied, and it stays lit for 20 minutes after, so there's a long delay in using the facilities at our facility, so it's, it's true.
Yeah, so I, I just don't see anything happening soon. Brian?
And then Patty. I would leave the motion as it stands. I think the, if there's a difference between the township office and the station, as Mayor Measures, they're making it available for public to come in and do business, but all the larger gathering areas are closed, and we are simply a gathering area to begin with. And we have to be ready. Having said that, when things do begin to open, there will be public pressure to want to use the station, so I think we have to be ready to be up and running at some point, and we need to do whatever we need to do to get that to happen. But at the, at this point in time, I think we should simply leave it that we stay closed till the next meeting in the wild.
So now, should I talk to the church or not, Brian? Are you saying, talk to the church or not?
I would, I would talk to the church to find out what their intentions are. They may want to get in there, or they may say, no, we're not opening until October or something.
Patty?
Um, I think in my, I agree somewhat with Jeremy in twinning what's going on at the station with anticipated municipal buildings opening. I also, in my heart, think that we should look at offering the church and the Early On program as the first groups, and that you are going to, you're going to contact both of them, because I think there's probably, number one, church is an excellent community endeavor, and it's up to them, like, we're going to offer it to them, but it's up to them to follow the regulations, and it's not us to police them, only to clean after they've left. And obviously, we need a custodian in order to do this. So first, we're going to offer Debbie the job. She accepts it, then we approach these people and see if they want to come back. And I think that September, once school goes back in, if it goes in, I mean, these poor mummies with little children, this seems like a really important social outlet to them, but whoever is the administrator of it is responsible for following COVID regulations, and I think it's important for you to contact them to see if they're prepared to do that or not.
Yeah, that, that'll be part of my, that'll be part of my question and my comment to them, if they are interested. But remember, you have to follow all the regulations. Is there, so I will, I will take care of that, and I will talk to Debbie. Patty is preparing another letter. Jeremy is going to send the letter for Debbie through again with the other change that's in it. And I think, is there anything else? Any other pieces? Yes?
Yeah, we still have that motion on the, the floor. Moved by Anthony, seconded by Patty, that the station will remain closed at this time.
All in favor? Are we finished?
Can I just say that in terms of our finances, I've received the invoice from Inlight for the interior LED lightings. It's $10,732.77. We had approved that, to have that done, so I will be paying that. Our bank balance is approximately, and I don't get, I have not received bank statements since February. Once they go through the township, they, they send them on to me, but that hasn't been happening. So just based on my own records of what I know, we had a bank balance of some $17,000. This now, this invoice now reduces that to $6,428 in that area. It will not include everything. So be aware that our bank balance has been depleted significantly as a result of this invoice. And also, the good news is that with the solar panels, we're probably getting up to $10,000 a year now in income over the expense on the hydro.
Thank you.
So, that's about $800 to $900 a month that we can count on in terms of income coming in, which is some good news.
Pays our custodial fees.
All right. Jeremy, you just looked at your watch. I know you said you had to leave at 10. Is there anything else?
Can I ask what the board's appetite is for meeting in person? Is this something you're looking to rush into, or, or what have you? Just want to get a feel for your appetite. I'm working on a protocol, so...
I would personally prefer in person. I don't know about the rest of you.
I would. Sure.
I like it this way.
Okay, Patty, everybody but you likes it this way. Everybody you wants an in-person, so, we're good. All right? Anything else? Can I then say the meeting is adjourned?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Morning.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, buddy. Thank you for volunteering. Good job.